Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, August 14, 2025, meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board. It is 6:34 and we're meeting this evening at the Lakeville Police Station at 323 Bedford Street. We do have LakeCam recording this evening. Is anyone else recording? For the record, hearing none. We're going to jump right in and take Agenda Item Number 5 out of order. It's the Stormwater Bylaw Review. We do have with us remotely our interim town planner. Unfortunately, there are some issues going on, so we can't see her, but we can hear her. And she's going to present some of the edits to the Stormwater Management Bylaws that she's been working on and just kind of go through those items that we have in the works right now. So, welcome Michaela. Oh, and just for the record, we do have a quorum this evening. We're waiting on Jack and Dan to arrive. We have David, myself, and John this evening, as well as our Associate Planning Board member Donna and our Clerk Kathy. So, welcome, Michaela. Unfortunately, we can't see you.
Hi, Donna. I'm so sorry about the technical difficulty and hopefully we'll get that cleared up for any future meetings. But thank you guys for having me and I appreciate the work. I just want to go over some of the storm water management changes that we have made to the bylaws. So, run a little bit of a time crunch. We're gonna just kind of dive in. So, there's three things that I wanted to kind of go over with the board. The first one being the authority for the storm water management. So, in the past edition, we had the Select Board, so we've taken them off as the authority. And right now, we have the authority mainly with the Planning Board. So, if Site Plan Subdivision Special Permit, then the Stormwater Management application would go in conjunction with those to the Planning Board. If none of those are needed, but a Conservation Commission application is needed, then the Stormwater Management application would go to Conservation. And then if there is no other permit that is needed, then they would come before the Planning Board or just a Stormwater Management application just by itself. So, the only time it would go to Conservation is if Planning Board is not needed at all and Conservation is. And then in the bylaw, we have it that the Planning Board right now would still be the administration as far as like adopting, amending the rules and regulation. You guys would oversee the enforcement fees, so all of those authoritative powers would rest with the Planning Board. So, as you can see, the Planning Board does hold most of the authority for the bylaws still. So, I was gonna, excuse me, I was gonna kind of go through all of the changes we had made first and then if we want, we can kind of go back through them if we have time. So, for fee, so there's kind of two options we can go for charging a fee. We could all, option one is we could always charge a storm water fee separately. So regardless of any other application that any board is seeing, they would always have to pay a storm water fee. So, you pay your site plan application fee and then you still pay your storm water application fee as well. There's pros and cons to that. You know, you're gonna get your cost recovery and you're giving it that clear, you know, application program. The con is there's an increased fee for applicants and it can kind of feel like you're duplicating your fees. Number two is that you only charge the storm water fee if it's the only application or review needed. So, if the application needs site plan, special permit, anything else, they wouldn't pay for an additional storm water fee application. Again, pros and cons, you're avoiding that doubling charge. It's a little more economically development friendly. The con is obviously you're not getting as much in your fees for application. I did speak with Serped about this. Their recommendation was that since most of, you know, most one acre projects will require site plan review, they kind of recommended that for right now, we don't charge a separate storm water fee when the project is already paying for another one. So, you know, these fees that we see, the hundred, oops, I'm sorry about that, the $100, $500, those would only really be if there was no other application needed. So, again, something that, you know, we can absolutely discuss. There's merits to both options. And then the next change that we made was the process. So, the process now is the public hearing within the applicable rules for site plan review or subdivision application. The reason being is it will make it if the storm water application is tied to a site plan review application, it just, it merges the timelines together. Whereas the previous bylaw that you all had seen, it was within 21 days. So, the difference being you would, the Planning Board would have had to open the hearing for the storm water management application within 21 days of receipt of it. That may not line up with being able to get the site plan review application to the newspaper, notify the butters, you know, all the things that you need to do for site plan review. So, the thought process was this would kind of give the Planning Board more time so that you guys could hold the hearing jointly with, you know, both of the application, the site plan application and the storm water application. You wouldn't have to be tied down to, oh no, we have 21 days to open the storm water management application and then two weeks later, you're opening the site plan application. Obviously, that happens. People have done special permit or, you know, site plan and then realized, oh wait, we need a special permit halfway through the process. So, it's not impossible to have two different applications for the same project as you all are well aware. But, you know, I think having a similar timeline just kind of makes it a little bit easier. And those were some of the big notes. I didn't want to rush it, but I know we're under a little bit of a time crunch and I wanted to make sure that the board had more than enough time to ask any questions. So, I will kind of hand it back over to the board at this point.
All right. Thank you, Michaela. Hi, Dan. Hi, Jack. We just had a couple members show up, Michaela.
Hi, everyone.
Hi there. How are you?
Good. And apologies about the technical difficulties. I swear I'm a person and not a black boss.
Well, I wouldn't have known that there was any technical difficulties going on, so we're good to go.
Okay, good. Then I won't say anything anymore.
Michelle, this is, I'm sorry, Michaela, this is Dan Wilga with the Planning Board.
Hi, Dan. She's kind of gone over the items that she's worked on, the authority, the fees. She gave us the options regarding the fees. I guess that's something that we should, you know,
Talk about.
Primarily discuss, what direction to go in for the fees and...
Okay.
In addition to, I'll just throw this out, in addition to choosing whether you want option one or two, the actual fee numbers that I have there listed, the 100, $500, those were, you know, looked at from a lot of various other towns, but the actual numbers also can be amended and changed if the Planning Board doesn't feel those are in line with what you guys were thinking.
Okay.
So, does anyone have any questions, comments?
Yeah, I kind of like the Carver approach to it, where you're not doubling up.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, I, yeah, only when it's its own application because you're already, I mean, I guess it's already been wrapped in and, I mean, I don't...
And I mean, we've been reviewing, you know, doing the peer review for storm water all along with site plan review. It does, and I know also Town Council has brought it up that, you know, you can't charge more than, you know, what your costs, you can't really profit from it. So, it does make sense to do it that way, I think. So, I think, are we all in agreement?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yeah, absolutely. It's a good model.
Now, what about the fees themselves? She did kind of give us, we have a breakdown of all these, what the other towns do.
Yep.
Ashlands, Brewster, Carver, Dartmouth, Spencer, and Westwood.
So, these fees would be only if it was by itself, right? These are the fees if, yeah, right, yeah.
So...
Yeah, I kind of agree with the $100 per acre, minimum 300. If you're a larger project, yeah, you got, you got more to review and there's more.
Yeah, that was kind of a thought process was like a commercial or industrial site is obviously going to have our free or storm water management review. Then, for example, like a single family home that, you know, may trigger storm water review, that's probably not going to be an in-depth, you know, multi-day review.
And that's, and that's only when they're, when that's the only, only permit they're trying to get too, so. And that's not gonna happen very often.
No, yeah, and I don't know when it would.
Yeah, I mean, if you're just, if on a typical residential lot here, which is an acre and three quarters, then, you know, if you're doing just a little quarter of it, so you're not disturbing very much, then you probably fall below, below even needing a permit because...
Right, if it's an acre.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think of the item for the single-family ADU because ADU, they're always going to have to go through site plan review now. They're always gonna get that, so it'd just be like if they were, what? If they were adding a driveway or altering their driveway, that would trigger the storm water review, storm water management?
Only if it's...
These would be more like a launch key, like especially for like subdivision. If you're modifying the subdivision, because obviously if a residential subdivision, they would need to come before you for a subdivision application, you know, Form C. But this would be if you're modifying the subdivision greatly or like a commercial or industrial site, if you're adding to it or putting in, you know, larger parking areas, it may trigger that application.
Okay. Yeah, but an ADU probably doesn't because you're most likely...
They're already coming for site plan review anyways, for new ADUs anyways. I mean, again, I'm fine, but I don't know when, when they would. I'm trying to think of like a recent, even like, I think in our bylaws with the commercial site, they change their parking for so much, they have to come back for site plan review. It'd be under 1,500 square feet, so I guess, yeah, I think it's not a problem to keep it in. I don't see, I don't think we'll see a lot of these fees without it, so. But that's good to keep it in so that just at least there's something there for when, if it, when and if it does come.
Right.
I agree with you. The chances of a single family needing to come for a storm water permit and not, you know, needing anything else is probably very slim, but even in Carver, because that, you know, obviously that's the example, option two there, they do still list out, you know, single family and residential. So, if for whatever reason it were to happen, it's in place that you would have an application fee.
Okay. Yeah, no, I agree with that.
And we're happy with these fee numbers?
Yeah, I mean, so, I mean, Carver's similar style to our town, just sizing and everything. So, I think the pricing there is fair. I'm trying to think of, it's not rain tree prices and it's not Westwood prices, so it's right in the middle, so...
Yeah, the only one would be like, I guess, the residential subdivision, right? The 500, because that, I mean, so that's, that what could be two ounces? And you're gonna make them, I mean, you're making a single family pay one, but if the subdivision has to be divided, they're gonna have two ounces, then you're talking about 250, right? So, I mean, I understand the multifamily. We don't really have a lot of those in Lakeville, so I...
So, does it make sense to just leave it as the one to two per disturbed acre with a minimum of three then? Like, do we, do we need a tier for residential still, single versus...
If you want, we could do like a residential subdivision of four multifamily and do, you know, one to five houses and do, you know, 250 for the fee and then do residential subdivision or multifamily, anything above five is 500 if that is something...
Or even like three, I mean, like more, more than, I was just thinking more than two houses, right? Just so that way, you know, so it's not, you know, it's two and a half times for that, you know.
Right, so currently, I think it's for our application fees, it's 250 per lot, right? Or is it? I thought...
That's for A and R.
For an A and R?
Yeah.
I know, I can't remember off the top of my head, but to have something that's maybe in line with that...
Yeah, maybe like for, yeah, almost like 150 per...
So, not to belabor this, but what is, what is, no, 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 I'm just, what is considered multifamily at this moment? Because that's, you know, I think of, you know, triple decker, three, I mean, we have very few here.
40R and 40B currently.
Okay. Yeah.
But then John's right, we've had, we've seen subdivisions where it's two.
So, yeah, could we, yeah, could we do it like residential subdivision, you know, one, 100 per house up to 500 max?
Sure.
You know what I'm saying? So that you're only, if it's only, if it's two houses have to do it, then you're only, each house is only a...
Five, 500. It's 500 per lot? Oh, okay, so that is in line.
Okay, all right, that's fine then.
All right, I was just thinking it was...
We can leave it.
Okay, yeah, so we have...
Okay, so wait, so we're leaving it at 500 or we're doing the 100 per house, 500 max?
500 max, right?
Yeah, I think that's, I think, are you fine with that, Michelle? For the residential subdivision? 100 per lot up to 500 max?
I mean, I get, I, I'm tempted to leave it as is because single family is at 100 and then residential subdivision. So, I guess that's where, to me, maybe a subdivision is different than a multifamily because the multifamily will tend to be much larger of a project.
Right, we're not, doesn't matter. If you leave it this way, the multifamilies are in there. So, I was just saying, trying to alleviate something for like a two-house subdivision that's gonna have to pay $500 versus...
Right.
And multifamily really doesn't apply to us to this town.
Um, yeah, I mean, whatever you guys think.
I think it's fair.
So, yeah, do the, what John has suggested, the 100 up to 500? Okay.
Because I think that's a safe, really, really, it's a safe area to be in, especially for the size of this town.
Right, well, the two and three house subdivisions, they'll have to pay.
Right.
Trying to like keep it there, I guess.
Yeah, I would say it's, it's fair. What do you think?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I agree.
Okay, so we have the fees tied down.
We have a consensus there.
The choice of Carver. Has everybody had a chance to look through the bylaw and the changes to the language? Anybody have?
Yep, I went through it. I think it was, it was more so formality of, I can't remember what page it was on. I wrote it down in my book here. But other than that, I thought, because we've gone through this a few times now, everything else looked good. I can't remember where it was though.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't...
And Michaela, all of the changes that you made are in the bold red underline? Is that correct?
Yeah, the track changes, yeah. So, the only, the last thing was just the timeline or the process, I guess I should say. Again, we kind of changed it from it being the Planning Board has to hear it within 21 days of receipt to now it's following like the site plan.
Right, that makes sense to me because that's...
Yeah, what's the schedule on site plan review?
That's the same, 21 days.
Same 21 days?
No?
We changed it at the last town meeting to 30. I don't think it's been approved yet though.
Oh, okay, so it hasn't been approved, but we did change it to 30?
Can be tight sometimes.
What, is it 30 now?
It's 30 days, yeah.
You know, I would say make it the same.
Yeah.
You know, change it 21 to 30.
Well, so if it says concurrent with, rather than the 21 days, it would be the 30 days then? Or should we, should we explicitly state that?
If it was a separate one, I think you'd want it 30.
Even the 30, okay, so yeah, we should say, call out the 30 days then.
Okay, so take out, you know, applicable rules for site plan and just specifically say that the Planning Board will hold a public hearing within 30 days?
Yeah, that's what our bylaw...
And it still says, you know, for it to work concurrently with other permits, which
Yes.
Ideally, it'll be at the same time with site plan review. Does that make sense, Kathy? I want you to, I want you to weigh in on this too, because you do go through the...
Well, yeah, I think 30 days, because if you look at, if someone put an application in yesterday, we wouldn't get them till September, they'd be on 21 days.
Right, right, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, and that was part of the reason was I, the 21 days just, that's a little tricky with, you know, having to...
Well, we sometimes have, yeah, we sometimes have three weeks in between our meetings depending on how the months go. April sometimes you have three weeks, well, not two weeks, so...
Yeah.
I'm all set on changes. The changes were made. I was looking at a previous version, so we're good.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, we're good.
Yeah, so, and I had just sent Michaela a couple changes of my own. And actually, I wouldn't even check to see if this was a different version or not, but I think it's the same.
There was one instance where I had left the previous town. I had borrowed some of their bylaw language from and I did change that, but I will go through and make sure.
Okay, and then...
Any other communities.
I think my only, there was a couple instances where it just said Planning Board or Board and I think just to keep it consistent, keep it as Planning Board or its agent because ideally, we're gonna use peer review for this and hopefully we'll have a full-time planner to take on the bulk of the work as well. Yep, and then, let me just see.
I know the, Kathy, I want to make sure that I get from you regarding the application. I didn't list out on the application all of the supporting documentation that would need to be included. It spells it out in the bylaws. So, you know, the storm water management, you know, the actual document and fees and any other variances that are going with the property, that's in the bylaw, but I can include that in the actual application if that seems like that would be easier.
Yeah. So, I'm wondering if the board should change their site plan application to have a storm water management permit application required to be submitted at the same time?
That makes sense too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that way, everything will come in together.
As one packet.
And so then, I was talking to Michaela about this earlier regarding like a decision and it's, it really makes sense to have it as a site plan review and a storm water condition and decision as well because it just seems like there's so much overlap. Might as well just make it a new... Because if it's required for every site plan...
Maybe just like certain conditions that would go with that, that kind of have it broken down, but within the same.
Right, exactly. If the board thinks, so, I mean, that sounds good. If we have a combined application, then a combined condition decision? Okay, that's good because actually that'll cut down, I'm glad, I do suggest that that makes sense.
Definitely cut down on the back and forth.
So, will it be a combined application or will it be like a requirement of the site plan review?
Requirement of the site plan review.
All right, because every time site plan review happens, it'll trigger...
Right, the storm water management, but then if they're on the storm water management, yeah.
Storm water management permit if, if applicable.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I mean, yeah.
So, should we still have a site, a storm water management application just for those standalone?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll use just for the standalone versus...
Yeah, I think that would, that would work good.
So then you'll have two different forms, but mainly you'll just use that site plan review with the storm water.
But the required list of items should still be in this one?
Right, yeah, I think so, because that'll stay consistent with what we've done with the other applications.
And the required documents are still within the storm water bylaw? So, even if they're not filling out the application, they would still have to reference the storm water bylaw and it, then it goes through what is required for that application.
Right, and that's what we did with the other forms. We basically just took it out of the bylaw, put it into the form, so it was right in front of them, so they, you know, no excuse for missing an item, so.
All right.
So, we have application.
Fees.
Fees.
Yep.
Language. There was just the one, the only question that I still had was in regards to enforcement, you know, how that's gonna play out because, you know, if we don't have a planner, what is that process gonna look like? So, I think that's my last question.
That doesn't fall into Building Commissioner then?
So, he's already in charge of the non-storm, storm water discharge and obviously enforcement of a number of other things. So, that's where I don't know what the recommended, you know, procedure for that would be.
Yeah, and that was a kind of a question that I had with one of the other, through the decision when I was coming up with the conditions, you know, applicant will submit the complete operation and maintenance plan. Right now, I have it going to the town planner. And if you want, I can structure it and try and bring up the decision, but I know we are under a tight time crunch, so maybe best not to fumble around, but do we want it to go to the town planner? Does it make more sense to go to more like a DPW, to the town engineer?
What, to go to them?
That's what I was saying, Building Commissioner, because he's already...
Storm water.
Oh, so they typically submit it for site plan review with their site plan. So, I think that should still stay the way that it is, right?
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so I think it's just, it's enforcement, I think, for me, is the last item at this point now.
Is that something we should revisit again?
So, I think, I think I'd like to see a clean draft of everything, send it over to Town Council, ask her that question and then hopefully we can have something else, you know, get something back from her and put it on our next meeting.
Yep.
Yeah. Does that work for you, Michaela?
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Great, well, thank you so much for joining us this evening.
No, thank you for having me.
And...
Nice meeting you on the phone.
Yeah, nice to meet you all and hopefully we'll get it figured out for next time. And, but yeah, in the meantime, if you guys have any questions about anything, please feel free to email me or let me know, but otherwise, have a wonderful rest of your meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
All right. Moving on, we have Agenda Item Number One. Public hearing for site plan review, 28 Precinct Street, continued to this evening upon the application for site plan review and approval submitted by Andrew Sukforth on behalf of the town of Lakeville for the construction of a 17,040 square foot six-bay fire station with access from Bedford Street. It will include onsite parking, storm water management system, utility connections, Title V system, inappropriate site features, possible vote. So, welcome.
Good evening, members of the Lakeville Planning Board once again. My name is Spencer Lins with Clark Corporation. With me is Chief O'Brien. So, want to just take this first few moments to just sort of highlight what work has been done since the last meeting. No plan revisions have been made, but it was clear after the last meeting that there was a few lingering comments that could probably use some, a greater burden of proof, a little bit more evidence to support the claims that were made and to have Chief O'Brien's presence here to just clarify some of these things because he is the foregoing expert here on fire departments. So, want to thank that he's here. So, one of the big sticking points last meeting was turning movements and grading and how they interact onsite, especially at the front of the site with access for the fire apparatus. So, I just wanted to highlight this really quickly. So, I've provided two different diagrams to the board here that show the turning movements for an oversized apparatus. This is a larger apparatus than what is used in the town of Lakeville. I want to be fair. I don't know how to best do this. Is this better? Is this better?
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry, so sorry. So, what was previously done last time, I'll just go over it quickly again. We did some turning movements, we had a lot of questions from the planning board based on turning movements, and so what we've done is taken a conservative fire apparatus, and we've modeled the fire apparatus's ability to pull into the site from both the northbound and southbound directions, pull onto the site, turn around safely, and be able to back in. So we've clearly shown that on these diagrams, you can see that the fire apparatus is able to pull in, pull sort of diagonally across the apron, across the access drive, and back into the bay. This center bay, I believe, chief, is the, where the largest apparatus will be housed, so.
Are you able to hear him?
He really isn't my hand, but now that we're on the subject, I think-
You have to-
Yep, sir.
You have to come up and-
You're gonna have to come up and state your name for the record.
Sorry, I'll just say everyone else from here.
No? I just don't know, the last time I was at a town meeting, it was a while ago, we voted on a fire truck. And the fire truck was too big for the fire house.
It's not too big, it's just tight.
And sir, can you state your name for the record?
George Robinson, George, Bedford Street.
Thank you.
So, how did you describe the truck that you used in there?
How did I describe it?
To turn a conservative fire truck or something?
Yes, we, so what I did is I have the parameters, the dimensions of the fire trucks that are used in the town of Lakeville.
So you should be using the parameters of the biggest truck that you have, correct? Is that the truck that you-
I used the bigger truck. Bigger truck, okay. Yep, all right, yeah, okay.
That's the newer, right?
So the, what's required is that the turning rates is the clearance of the access has to be, meet the most restricted vehicle, which would be our Lio truck. What Spencer's communicating is that he exceeded the specifications of that Lio truck. He, and that, that provides the flexibility down the road.
Correct, so the model done here, the turning movements that I modeled here are a much larger vehicle, I wouldn't say much larger, a larger vehicle than what is currently used as the largest vehicle in the town of Lakeville. So it provides essentially a factor safety, a level of conservative design work that we try to bake into the design itself.
And that adds lends credibility to the project, there's people in this audience right now who have provided the specifications to our vehicles, and the people in this audience have complied with their, with the engineering of their site plans based on the information that I've given them. Spencer's actually exceeded those restrictions and done something even more restrictive.
Okay, I just got confused, because the way you stated it, it sounded like you were coming up with a conservative sized truck, when the issue should be the biggest thing that-
He was aggressive.
Yeah, maybe I should rephrase that as an overdesigner.
Yeah, he was very aggressive.
Bigger is better.
Yeah, a bit of an overdesigner, really.
Yeah, and I appreciate the fact that he did that.
Yeah, so, so we modeled that, right, and it's really a twofold problem, right? Because it's one thing for the vehicle to access it in to be, right? We were able to make the turning movements, but the other thing that sort of gets implicated is the grading onto the site, the fire truck's ability to go up the ramp, or up the approach apron, onto the concrete apron, and actually into the station. And so there was a lot of questions about the grading in the last meeting, and so I want to further clarify that as well. So from Bedford Street, Bedford Street exists at about elevation eighty-seven, and up from eighty-seven, the station exists at elevation ninety-point-five. So we're going up three and a half feet, and about a hundred feet, a little less than that, but essentially, what I need to provide as an engineer, first of all, is a flat, relatively flat approach into the station across the apron. So the apron is graded out at roughly two percent, and so what that means is out of the station, there's a point-six-foot drop over thirty feet, which is two percent, and so this gives the fire apparatus an immediate flat access point, entry point into the station. Cold weather, icy weather, wet weather, any weather, this gives you flat access immediately into the station. And so from there, the problem then becomes, how do we get up from the road to the apron, right? Because we only dropped point-six feet and thirty feet, we have another maybe seventy feet to go before we get back down to the roadway. And so what we did was, I ran an analysis of how far back I could put the fire station from the roadway in order to provide a five percent pitch up from the roadway to the front of the apron. So if this makes sense, you have to crown the roadway, and then you have five percent up into the approach apron, two percent across the approach apron, into the fire station, right? And so what is the significance of five percent? Well, five percent is what ADA accessibility is for reference, so what you would expect a wheelchair to be able to access into a building in any condition in, this is the grading that's provided for fire apparatus, right? So this is what we view as a very conservative design, but there's even more that goes into it, right? Because when you're a fire apparatus and you're extremely long, and you're going up at five percent, the front of your fire truck is going to be higher than the back of your fire truck, and so then you have to think about the bottoming out of the fire truck pulling in from Bedford Street. And so what we did was, we saw how tall the fire truck actually sits off of the roadway, and we ran an analysis saying that, okay, if I'm a fire truck and I'm pitching at five percent, and I'm angled at five percent, and my roadway was sitting down here, we'll call it elevation eighty-seven, right? My fire truck is going to drop one foot over twenty feet and have that much less clearance to clear the roadway at Bedford Street. And so the fire apparatus sit more than fifty, or sit more than a foot off the roadway, right? And so that means, a further analysis was done to make sure the fire truck wasn't actually bottoming out at Bedford Street, or bottoming out at the approach apron. So that was just another one of the thoughts that came into it, another one of the thoughts that we worked out with MEP was the fire truck is now sitting a foot higher at the front of it, and needing to, and needing to have that extra foot of clearance into the actual garage bay itself, which is something we also coordinated with. So I just want to just paint the picture of how fundamentally we thought about this grading, how conservatively we designed this grading, and how much thought was put into the placement of the station far back from the roadway, the grading up to the station, the pitch of the apron, the pitch of the, you know, approach pavement, the elevation of Bedford Street, the elevation of the station, balancing cut and fill, making sure we weren't spending too much money on earthwork, all of these things were balanced to come up with this, this design. We spent a year and a half with the fire station committee perfecting this location, coordinating this with the fire department, making sure not just the fire department, but everybody who's driving the apparatus were able to provide input and tell us, you know, what they thought about the design, what they thought about access, what they thought about the ability to maneuver the site, and so we provided grading as such. Now, I spent a lot of time, you know, talking about the grading up into the station from Bedford Street. The grading out back behind the station is a lot more simple, you basically just have access of the fire apparatus around the back here. It is relatively flat, and basically pitched in the center towards catch basins to the north and south, and then you get some overland flow making its way directly into the basin. We have gone through extensive peer review for not just the stormwater onsite, but for the grading onsite, for all of the catchments onsite, for our implications with erosion controls, for our implications with any possible pollutants that would leave the site. We're an outstanding resource water district, we are in, we're in, you know, just a very protected natural resource. We have gone through all of the peer review requirements put forth in front of us from the Conservation Commission, this has gone through NHES peer review, this has gone through MASTOT review now, and so that's what I want to get into next, MASTOT review. We've received, sorry-
Can I interrupt?
Going too much, yeah.
So, I'm hyper, hyper paranoid that anything will go wrong with this project, I've lobbied for it so hard that, that I know that I'll own something like a design flaw, things like that. I, you know, I have to thank the planning board for their scrutiny, because between the last meeting and this meeting, my understanding of all this work that he's done, and all these engineers, and all the peer review, and independent parties, and all this work, I never really had my head around it, I just sat there nervous about the outcome. I sat there like, like I hope I don't screw this up, Lakeville deserves the station, it's gotta be right. So when you guys, you guys did what you did, like, the end result is now, now I'm comfortable. Like, I, I was very uncomfortable, because I just didn't, I didn't have, like, all this work was done, and I, I really didn't consume it properly. I didn't have my understanding wasn't where it should be, and so it's difficult for me to sit before you and be confident, but now I'm confident. Now I feel that, you know, I'm like, holy cow, a lot's gone into this, and, and I appreciate, I just wanted to interrupt and say that I appreciate all the, all the time you guys have taken in the, in the past few weeks to bring my, my comfort level up, because, you know, I am a customer, these are customers in the room, and we want it to be right.
Yeah.
It's more of an operational question than, than anything else, but isn't the idea with the doors on both sides, that you'd pull the trucks around and enter from the back?
Yeah, it's, but it's, it's also nice to know that you have the engineering to, to, to just stay in the front of the hatch.
Yeah.
But preferably, the trucks are gonna swing through and make the wide sweeps. That's, that's, less wear and tear on the pavement, less wear and tear on the trucks, it's just, it's an easier movement. We're not typically in a rush coming, coming back to the station.
Right, right.
So, yeah, but it's, it's good to have that option, you know, twenty years down the road, thirty years down the road, or making repairs to pavement, or, you know, there's something going on, and, you know, our, our access to the camp is blocked. Now, we know that we've engineered a solution in the front, we can, we don't-
Yeah, I, I just kind of mostly wanted to make it clear that really, the, the way this thing will operate is-
I agree too.
Is by entering from the back and pulling straight through, that's, that's the purpose, that's the purpose of, of the design being set up the way-
Your understanding's correct.
My initial concern for the, the grading was not coming back to the station, it was leaving the station in the icy conditions and that, that piece of equipment coming down, and onto Bedford Street, that was my more-
Especially the big loaded truck.
That was, that was my only concern with that.
And, and I get it, and, and they've put, you know, five percent between, for all that stretch, it's-
Yeah.
Like, and that's-
Yeah, I mean, that's ADA accessibility requirements, you know, we're talking about, you know, this is a very standard grade provided for human access generally across the world, this is, is a very common design standard.
We do EVAC training, which is like, it's, it's basically an EPA certification to operate emergency vehicles. So the, the guys are trained to deal with snowy conditions and things like that, and what he's successfully made me comfortable with was the fact that I can back into that station without the rear end of the truck kicking out, and that's, that's, that's what I was nervous about, and now I'm not nervous anymore.
So, there was a lot of discourse, oh, I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt anybody.
No, you're good, yeah, I'm good.
Yeah.
I'm good, I, I just wanted to-
No, your understanding's correct.
Yep.
So there was a lot of discourse last meeting about a lot of the MASTOT right-of-way stuff. Thankfully, very soon after the meeting, we did receive our first round of MASTOT comments. We have not officially responded to those yet, we need to basically take some time to make sure we're providing the best response. But sort of the meat and potatoes of this planning board's sort of comments as they relate to MASTOT scope items was one, signage, and two, you know, is it safe, right? Is it safe for a fire apparatus to pull out of this fire station? So what we've done since then to also, you know, go through our own scope and our own commitments with MASTOT was conduct an actual traffic study out here in the last couple of weeks. So this was done last week, we had folks from Park Corporation out here looking at the speed of vehicles coming down Bedford Street, the actual site distance that we had to see those vehicles coming down Bedford Street. We took a look at, you know, traffic data, we took a look at speed data, we took a look at accident data that had occurred across Bedford Street over the last five years, so dating back all the way to 2020, so basically like a month or two pre-COVID, and then, you know, as we sort of came out of COVID and traffic sort of recovered. So we have a really good data set here, and so ultimately, the, the finding that we sort of, you know, concurred with our initial assessment of not needing a, an emergency beacon, was that we found that we far exceed the limits or the minimum expectations for what site distance should be under ASHTO requirements. And so basically, the way this was calculated is we took a look at speed, we took a look at crash data, and we took a look at how much site distance we actually have, and what speed cars are actually driving on Bedford Street versus what speed they are supposed to be driving, right? You know, this is a long straight drag, and it's easy to go fast, and so we took a look at that data, right? And we said, based on this data, based on the speeds that we're seeing, based on the data that we're seeing, what do we expect to be a reasonable spike, reasonable site distance, right? You have your time to react, you have your time to actually sort of perceive the danger, you have your time to actually stop with your vehicle, and so that was determined to be, I believe, four hundred and eighty feet coming from the south, and five hundred and fifty-five feet coming from the north. And so what we found in our own site distance analysis was that we have greater than eight hundred feet of stopping site distance. So this far exceeds the minimums required of us to, to actually have a fire apparatus pulled safely out into Bedford Street. And so we did make two recommendations, two recommendations, and two things that'll end up on the plans that go to MASTOT based off of this report. One of them is to do just basically what we would call vista pruning, to clear back the outer lying sort of limbs and branches that may further distract from site distance. This is one thing that I mentioned in last meeting, this is one thing that will very much end up on the plans now as a result of the MASTOT's comments, and so we're gonna trim back these branches to make sure we have the best site distance possible. And then in addition, one of the things that was brought up was signage, we will have signage on either side of the station that basically cautions drivers to, you know, the approaching fire station that they're going to see, right? And so I don't know the exact numbers for what was provided in the report in terms of where those signs will sit on the right-of-way, and then it'll likely be more of a MASTOT conversation that we have, or to determine the best possible location for the signs. But those signs would be provided per ASHTO design requirements, and so we'll have that additional layer of protection, layer of visibility, layer of safety going into the approach, the exiting, you know, sort of from the fire station. And Chief O'Brien, I don't know if you want to just mention the protocols that your folks have when they're pulling out of the station, especially given your existing conditions.
In my, in my experience throughout my career, my previous fire station had traffic light, it created more accidents than it prevented. People aren't used to stopping at a traffic light in front of a fire station, so when it's tripped, they run the light. Or one person stops, the other people don't, and they crash, it happens, it happens, we ended up disabling the light, because it was always such a problem. And because of that, we, the problems there, we were stopping at the end of the ramp, looking up and down the road, so it didn't alter, alter the way we did business, and if we had a light out here, it would be the same thing. People wouldn't stop at it, because they're not used to stopping at it, it's, it's only one that, it'd only cycle eight times a day versus how many times does the light cycle down at the intersection over there? So it's kind of gratifying to see that they, they found, they came to the same conclusion as, as my observations tell me, that the light would create more problems than it prevent, I hope that makes sense.
Yep. So-
Can I ask you a question?
Just a moment, just a moment, please.
Yeah, yeah.
Just let the board-
Yeah, so, we're just gonna have the, and then we'll do a public comment. So regarding the traffic study, thank you very much for putting the effort into doing this, because, you know, this does help. But I do have some questions with regards to how this traffic study was done with regards to the speed. So, what time on Friday morning was this done? Because it was done in the morning, because I saw the traffic study done probably around ten or ten-thirty in the morning on Friday, driving through town, and I said, oh, they're doing the traffic study, but why aren't they doing the traffic study during heavy volume? And, and again, this isn't for, it's for the safety of the speed limit, and it's more MASTOT than anything, so that's what my concern is, because these folks, I, I want to make sure that they're safe, more than anything.
Understood, absolutely, so it's not necessarily just based on the data, there is a factor of safety that you apply to this, and there's a calculation through ASHTO that I believe they mentioned in the report, that gets applied to the observations, right? So obviously, if you don't do it in the absolute perfect moment where the most cars are speeding the most, you won't get the best peak data set, so you apply a safety factor from the data that you observe in order to assume a more conservative site distance, right? And so that's why you see not, they recommend the minimum of four hundred and twenty-five feet, but we calculate a minimum from southbound where you're slower, starting out at four hundred and eighty feet, and then when you're really speeding up, you know, instead of the minimum four hundred and twenty-five feet, we calculate five hundred and fifty-five feet, right?
Because my concern is, sorry to interrupt, but my concern is more so not going from south to north, it's mostly from the south, coming down, and that hill, I mean, it's, it's just a grade, but people come very fast into town.
Understood, and so, yeah, that's, that's sort of what I'm, I'm, I'm trying to highlight, is that it's not just based on your observation, it's based on some safety factor being applied to what you're observing, so that you can assume for the, you know, worst case- It's based on some safety factor being applied to what you're observing so that you can assume for the, you know, worst case scenario, terrible driver, not paying attention type of site distance, right? So you can see that the minimum recommended site distance is 425, and that's prior to any calculation sort of being made, right? And so that's why we made the calculation based on a safety factor, based on what we observed as well, to assume a very conservative site distance.
Okay.
Which is why we came up with 555 feet. And then we have more than that. We have far more than that, far more than is calculable, which is why we don't specify an exact number because we have, we know we have more than 800 feet. We don't know how much more it is, but 800 far exceeds what would be required.
Okay. And the, the other quick thing is, uh, the crash data summary. That actually was very surprising, looking at that. I actually thought there would be a lot more.
I'm also surprised as well.
Um, so that was very helpful, and, you know, the, the way that it is currently set up right now, um, with the traffic study and your explanation does satisfy, um, my concerns, so thank you.
Great, thank you.
I would think that the current location of the fire station in relation to the road, the curves, because when those, those people are whipping around that curve, they don't know that a brand-new fire truck is pulling out. And so I think this location is better.
Oh, yeah. Far more.
Yeah, the sign, the safety lights, that's scary.
I can't tell you how many near misses we've had down there. There's no signage, and it's a blind curve, and you, you've all gone to the town hall and pulled out the normal line. We're, we're actually pulling out closer to that line.
Yeah.
We're actually in a, in a more precarious spot.
That's what, you, Chief and I talked about a little bit when I was down there. And I think this kind of location is better. It's virtually a straight road compared down there, and some of these guys are whipping right down there. And they do, they do a broad, broadside that truck. Any, any truck.
Absolutely.
Me. Uh, George Robinson again.
Hold on one second. John, did you have any?
Oh, I was gonna say, I, I feel like doing, I feel like people are going faster when it's not rush hour. I feel like there's more volume on rush hour. You're actually having, being paced by going slower, but I think it's, I think it's the, the midday and the, like the now time where people are flying more, and I'm surprised you didn't, you know, I mean, that, you get more. We are next to the police station, so people are kind of slowing their approach.
I hope so.
Do you feel like you're?
No, I feel, I'm, I'm fine with it.
We didn't factor the police station.
Yeah, but I didn't.
You would think, right? Police station, the sign.
Well, they're all doing their duty anyways.
You okay?
Yeah, it's not local in law.
Yeah. In, in, in your, in your communications with, uh, Mastot though, uh, I, I think maybe some consideration actually should be given to taking our 40 mile an hour sign, which is down here in front of the cemetery, and moving it north of the fire station. I think that would be, that would, that would be something that would be worthwhile to see. And it's just, uh.
Starting by the funeral.
I'm not even against that, no.
Yeah. Understood, yeah.
So if there's some, some way that you can pass that on to Mastot?
Absolutely.
That would be.
I think that's something we're gonna advocate for.
I would love to highlight that for a second because one thing that we do with Mastot, whenever we're replying to their comments, and you do this with a peer reviewer as well, do you have a pre-application meeting to make sure that, hey, here's all my comments, you know, do, am I answering this to your satisfaction? Am I, am I providing enough design standard necessary to your satisfaction to answer these comments? And so that's where we'll have the opportunity to have a discourse with MastDOT and see if that is a viable option to move the speed limit signs up. Um, and, and that's a conversation that Chief will be a part of, and that's, you know, entirely in MastDOT's jurisdiction, but
I, I know it's completely under theirs, but if there's somewhere along the way that somebody says, you know, hey, this is, this is a simple sort of thing
Yeah.
to do.
Unfortunately, MastDOT operates at more of a snail's pace, so that discourse hasn't happened yet, but it is going to happen.
Did you say you're gonna put up signs alerting the folks that there's a new fire station in the exit entrances?
Correct. Yep. And part of our discourse with, uh, MastDOT will be assessing what the best location away from the fire station will be for those signs.
Good.
Okay. And then just to note, um, because actually one of my concerns had been about the meeting room and the parking, and there was a gate there, and so Kathy actually shared with me that, um.
There is no gate. I goofed.
Well, she also, she. That's okay. I'm glad that's the case. But even if, even if it became necessary to add a gate because we have, you know.
The soccer fields.
Yeah, players, parents overflow parking in there. Um, it makes more sense now that she shared with me that it's not intended to be a public meeting space. It's more for.
Community data.
I, I guess the clarification I would make is this is where town meetings are held. This is where they continue to get held. I'm sure there will be a, a meeting where the public are invited to the fire station many, multiple times, and I'll let Chief O'Brien speak to that, but it's not that, it's not that there won't be public meetings over there. It's not that, you know, planning board's not gonna move over to this station.
So one of the things that we don't want to do is restrict access to the, to the parking lot for callback reasons. We don't want to, we can't restrict, uh, you know, we have a fire, all of a sudden, everybody's running back to the station. The back lot's designed in a way that it provides shelter for our, that back ramp's almost a training area. So the, the flow of traffic, they've designed it in a way that's gonna protect our firefighters who are out there training. It keeps the, it keeps the traffic away from them while they're drawing pole lines and, and doing things. So it's, it's really a smart design. Um, and what we do know is we know what our, our folks drive, and we know who belongs there. And so we know when there's a public meeting, if there's a public meeting there, um, that there's gonna be cars that we don't recognize. But on a Sunday morning when the soccer game's going on, uh, and it says, you know, guests or guests of the fire station authorized vehicles only, something like that, um, we know who doesn't belong there. And that's something that can be addressed on, you know, addressed.
I think that's the biggest concern. Is any overflow, any big events here? Cause they all go in the park in the.
Yeah, there's no perfect solution because the paramount, 90% of the time, it's, it's beneficial to the town, to public safety to have the lot unimpeded. Nothing to slow down, nothing to make, because these guys, as soon as they're out of their vehicle, they're going to the, the trucks. That's how we operate. We have three or four people on duty, and we need 17 in the fire. So most of them are coming from home. And so we want an unimpeded, uh, access to the parking lot, jump out of their vehicles, run to the trucks, and off they go.
Right.
And I, you know, a malfunctioning gate or a power loss or something like that is something I, I, I think it'd be more detrimental to, than dealing with some, some soccer parents that are, are parking there. I can, I can address that, you know? And, and during the rest of the week and all the time that, you know, we're gonna have plenty of spaces for, for meetings to be held. We're gonna have plenty of spaces for our firefighters to, to park. Um, we're gonna have plenty of spaces for all that. And if we have a problem with, with people overflowing in the lot, we'll address it, and we'll have signage.
Yeah, yeah, signage.
To discourage it.
Fire department employees only and visitors.
But it's serving the greater good. There's no perfect solution. The, the, the location serves the town because it's central, and, uh, it, it suits the needs response time-wise. And, but it's a detriment because we're so close to recreational, uh, things, there's lots of traffic. But it's a, it's only during limited times that that happens, and we can deal with it. We'll, we'll figure out a way to deal with it. But we're trying to serve the greater good, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
I hear you. All right, so.
Actually, you're in a better, uh.
Public comment?
You're, you're in a much better zone right now because, uh, I was here before the train station, right, on Route 18. And the real traffic jams happen on Route 79 and Route 105. And this little section of 18 actually doesn't experience the traffic, the train traffic that everybody else experiences, uh, on Main Street and, uh, Route 79.
There's just, there's a whole laundry list of reasons why this is a better site, and I, I think a lot of it's common sense, and I don't really, but, but just like you said, that we're busier at north, where, where the traffic, you know, we're, it's just such a better, better location to serve the town, and, 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 uh, and it's just serves the greater good for public safety. It's, um, I'm pretty excited about it.
So does that replace the old fire station or are we doing up to?
Uh, no, we're not gonna do it. I, I don't think we wanna pay for maintaining.
And, and there's, I believe there's currently a building.
There is.
Um.
Reuse. Reuse.
They're sorry, yeah.
Yeah, committee or something.
Yeah, yeah, they've met for the first time, I guess, recently.
And did anyone else, do you have more?
Yes.
Question, any more questions, sir? Did you have a question?
Who?
No? Okay.
You're the police chief emeritus, is that right?
So.
I mean, you're the police chief emeritus. You're the, I'm being funny, go.
All right, so anyways, Kathy and I looked through a standard set of conditions. We basically, I think, cut down about half of them. Um.
Is that the one that, that's this one with the markups?
Yes. Yeah, mine just looks different because it was prior to the, um, edits. So I don't know if we want to go through these one by one. Um.
Yep.
Okay, so we were basically getting rid of, I don't know if.
Yeah.
Is it, is it gonna look any different than?
We can see what's crossed out.
Yeah, okay, yeah, so we got rid of two and three, and five, and, uh, six is staying. Seven is staying.
Eight, eight, nine, seven, ten.
So eight, I had, we had questions because, um, as far as like review, like, should we do an ASBelt review just to make sure everything's built by the contractor to the specifications shown on the plan?
ASBelts are already mandated within our specs and within the plans very, very heavily.
Okay, so you do plan on doing with the?
The contractor will have to do ASBelts.
But, okay, so they'll submit it to you.
They will, yeah, they, I mean, they will provide us and the owner, the town.
Everything, just stepping away from the project and being AHJ, like I require ASBelts as well for fire alarm systems, fire protections, it's part, it's standard for all the projects.
Yeah, this is, yeah, very standard for projects of ours. We do a lot of fire stations, very standard for fire stations.
So if, if your engineer is doing these reviews, I don't know if, um, number eight is necessary then. Cause these are milestones that we would send peer review out to, to make sure that the construction is going.
Yeah, but these, but these conditions, even if they told us that we don't have to do anything about it, just notifying us that they're doing this.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
You know, the, the other thing you have to realize that's different from most of our projects is that this project goes out to bid, and.
And it is out to bid currently, yeah.
Is it out to bid now?
It is out to bid. The agenda window closes tomorrow.
Okay, so, uh, having a little bit better control, you know, or a little, little, little more control over that contractor who's working to a, to a low bid.
Okay, so we're just asking for notification prior to these items then?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're good with eight?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, nine and 10 are staying in, 11, 12, 13 are all coming out. Um, then the standard ones regarding the SWIP, and I saw that was also in conservation's conditions. Um, the illicit discharge statement, that's also in conservation's conditions, because they did the stormwater.
Yeah, the illicit discharge statement was provided as part of this application.
Okay. Um, six, uh, number 16 goes away. Uh, 17, I know you're not showing any signs, but just the standard condition, all signs shall comply with the Lakefield sign by law. Of course, you, you as emergency services, you do have a certain exception to.
Yeah, there's gonna, yeah, there's gonna be a construction sign.
I'm not looking to upset anybody over sign, that's for sure. I've been watching. Holy moly.
I like 18 though.
Yeah, so we're leaving in, oh, I know, 18, we're gonna make sure the fire department access requirements shall be met. That's.
Right, right, right.
That's on you, Chief.
Yeah.
Uh, we'll leave in 19, 20, um, so I, 21, did we delete? Oh, yeah, 22 is deleted, 23, I just saw that there was something. I don't know if there was another one. Delete 22, 20, and then make a new 23.
Whoa, yeah.
You've got a loading.
Oh, so this was a suggestion because that was, I don't know.
Loading dock?
Yeah, but that was when we thought there was a, uh, what's it, you?
Uh, gate.
You want to tell me this was kind of law?
Right.
I haven't, I haven't seen it.
So.
It's okay, it's okay. I'll ask if I don't understand.
So really, so what we're gonna do, we'll, we'll cut this down, send it to town council and just to ask her if this is good for our town project, because this is something new we haven't done.
Okay.
Um, and then you'll just get a copy of the conditions.
Do we want to take out 23, like to not put it in?
I don't think we need it.
I don't think. Yeah, I don't think.
As long as it's understood already, because this is.
Mm-hmm. You know, I had a loading dock for like food and stuff, you know.
And, and, and like you said, the, the concern was that there was a gate.
Yeah, it wasn't, the, we had original concern was that if you had a big meeting room and they're gonna have a town meeting where there's a private, confined parking lot, there's not enough public, there's not enough parking for the amount of people that could be in the room. But if the lot's open and it's just restricted, but it's open for when, when you have to use it, I don't think we need to have that note in there.
Right, okay, yeah, so we don't, I don't think we need 23, Kathy. Um.
More of a hindrance on the, on the building.
And then we're leaving 24, 25, 26, 27, um, which is kind of, even that's a little redundant, but can't hurt to leave it in, I guess, um, since the owner is the town.
Yep.
Um, 28, we're getting rid of, 29 and 30 stay.
Yep.
Okay, so we'll cut that down, send it over to Amy, have her review it, get back to us, and then we should be able to close it out.
Should I do like a backflip or a cartwheel?
If you can, I think so.
I got, I got.
I think you should. So we'll leave it open though, just in case there is, because if we close a public hearing, you're not supposed to have a chance to respond any longer. So we can leave it open, get that draft, we'll get it over to you, and the next meeting will literally just be closing the hearing, approving the conditions along with the site plan. And that, that should be it.
I got one question or comment. Anything that we've done here, uh, so far, and, and particularly in these conditions, are in compliance with your bidding documents that are out?
Absolutely, yeah. No, absolutely. Our, our, uh, specs go far and beyond the conditions that you could come up with right now. We have a very vetted.
They'll see that, they're gonna say Kathy's not doing.
I'm not, I'm not welcoming a challenge, but.
No.
We have, we've done, uh, dozens of fire stations at this point and have sort of vetted out our specs for drainage utilities, water utilities, sewer utilities, excavation support, excavation, site preparation, erosion controls, all these things, because we get feedback from contractors who request change orders all the time, or who find problems in plans, and we basically create an ironclad set of specs that are already out to bid, already in the hands of contractors. These are supposed to protect the town, they're supposed to protect us, they're supposed to protect everybody involved with the project to make sure that this gets carried out per the design. So the standard conditions are great, they are perfect for what the planning board needs them for. We put out sets of specs that go far beyond, uh, a lot of those.
Okay, so I guess.
Yeah, no, I would, I, I would expect that. I mean, the, the, the one that, that I see that gets tripped up often is, is the, uh, the road cleaning getting done periodically because
Yeah.
oftentimes it isn't.
That's in our operation and maintenance manual that was approved by the Conservation Commission, is the street cleaning scope.
The practices in, in town is that Franklin's crew comes up pretty frequently to the town hall too, not frequently, but regularly.
Yeah, I mean, but see, that's, that's, that's within town operations and, and, you know, contractor.
Oh, okay.
Is, is responsible for that.
Yeah.
And we're, and we're making the project responsible for it, but I want to make sure that
Yeah.
he knows that
Yeah.
it's in there.
I don't know what the specific spec section is, but there are contractors required for all modes of erosion control and dust control on-site at all times, so, you know, watering the site, you know, all these things.
I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt you, but we gotta, we gotta move this along.
Moving on here, please.
So the thing is, we, we can continue this to September 11th and hopefully close it out then because we're, we're foregoing our second meeting in August.
It's gonna be here, September 11th.
That's, it, it should be okay? Um, cause like I said, we're, we're just closing it out, and we'll let you know if there's any questions or issues beforehand. The other thing that Kathy suggested is if we have to because of a timeframe, we could potentially do a Zoom meeting.
Absolutely.
Um, maybe on September 4th, which is the first Thursday, if necessary.
Whatever you guys need.
Do you prefer a Zoom meeting to get it done on the 4th, or? Do you prefer a Zoom meeting to get it done on the fourth, or?
If it's not so much of a burden and you guys have, that'd be great.
Okay, so, so let's, someone wanna make a motion to continue to nine, four?
I'll make a motion to continue twenty-eight, Precinct Street to, uh, September fourth.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, this is, we'll see you September fourth via Zoom and we'll get that over.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you. Yeah, thank you very much, appreciate everything you got, and I apologize for all the people waiting.
Thank you, chief, appreciate that, have a good night. All right, um, moving on, agenda item number two, public hearing for definitive subdivision modification to Golfer's Way, forty-four Clear Pond Road, map zero five nine, block zero zero one, lot fifty upon the application for a modification to the definitive subdivision entitled Golfer's, Golfer's Way to move the roadway requiring an additional waiver, possible vote. So.
Hello, everyone, hello.
Hold on one second, I do have to, I gotta read the notice now. The public notice, the local planning board will conduct a public hearing pursuant to master general law, chapter forty-one, section eighty-one T, on Thursday, August fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, at seven PM at the Lakeville Police Station, three twenty-three Bedford Street, to consider a request to modify the definitive subdivision plan Golfer's Way, which was approved on September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. The modification proposes to move the roadway and requires a waiver that was not necess- necessary on the original application. The location of the land is forty-four Clear Pond Road, map fifty-nine, block one, lot fifty, and is owned by Derek A. and Madeline J. Maskey, trustees of Webster Realty Trust. The application and assorted documents can be viewed in the planning department by appointment. Can someone?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing to forty-four Clear Pond Road.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Hearing is open, hello.
Hello, everyone, Madam Chairperson, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good, uh, yeah, so I, like we met the last time, it was just to modify the, uh, the actual cul-de-sac road itself. And, uh, I believe, did you get anything from the chief?
Yes.
Where he was, he was okay with it because of different things, I guess.
Okay, yeah, he says Michelle has my approval.
Shot and sweet.
Yep, um, and I think we did have peer review, already reviewed it, but, uh, when we spoke with town council, she wanted you to resubmit so that we had a set of plans that showed the waiver, waivers requested.
Request for waiver, correct.
Okay. But in looking at the plan, where is the waiver? That's what I didn't see.
I don't know, I, I wasn't sure, I didn't know I was supposed to bring in anything to, to explain that, I guess.
Well, cause the plan, so we got the new sheets, right?
Yeah.
But I didn't see on the sheets, did, so we didn't get like the cover page, was it, was there changes made to the cover page?
So I looked at that, it was on the original title page, but I didn't see another title page.
Okay, so typically, you know, what you do is, you know, list the waivers requested on the title page, so maybe you just need to submit that one more page, cause I think.
Yeah, what's, what's, for the record, what's the waiver?
Uh, just the, the width across the cul-de-sac itself. I forget how many feet it's actually gonna be.
I wanna say it went from, what, one forty down to one?
Looks like it's one, what is it, one?
One sixteen?
The chief's left. I think it was.
Hey, I don't see a number.
No. Says forty-four radius.
Yeah, unfortunately I don't have a bigger plan, so I can't read that. And I apologize, cause I wasn't, didn't know I had to bring something for that.
Yeah, you've got an inside radius. Look, then you show a, a roadway width of twenty, so that would be one twenty to the outside.
Right, correct.
Okay, so I can, I can, I can see it.
Okay. So we did have peer review, check this over already, right Kathy?
Uh, I guess, I thought I had, had got to Liz, I just sent that to her.
Oh, you just, okay, all right, so, so.
She got the original from before though.
She got that, like the sketch.
Yeah, and I thought she got this one too, cause the engineer sent her it to her.
Yeah, if you, if you wouldn't mind, thank you.
How you doing?
Hi. Um, for the, for the record, Liz Anspie, fresh, our project manager from Apex. And, um, I did take a look at, um, this design, and I also took a look at the re, the proposed revision to the cul-de-sac. Briefly, I never went into much detail with it. I didn't see a big issue about reducing the width of the cul-de-sac as long as it was okay with a fire engine. Which it appears it was. But I haven't, I haven't really produced any letters yet, um. I don't see any real engineering issues with the proposed changes.
And it really is a minor change, it's just whether or not this board wants to approve that waiver that, you know, we wanted to see it.
And it includes the whole parking lot and everything, you know, so it's all parking lot once you get to that point anyway, so the road's gonna basically blend right into the parking lot.
So can we approve the plans with him adding the sheet? With the waiver on it? The title sheet or no?
I mean, you can make that a condition that he has to supply that title sheet.
Before we sign it, right?
Yeah.
Right.
Waivers are your presented.
And we are. And it's really a subdivision that this is a minor change to. We've already conditioned and decisioned.
Yeah, cause they have to, you know, indicate what waiver it is that you're looking for.
Okay.
So not changing any of these sheets, these sheets can be approved, usually, we need, it was on, if the, if the waivers were originally on the cover sheet?
Yeah, we'd like to see it added to the cover.
Cover sheet gotta be resubmitted.
Resubmitted, yes.
When we go to stand, when we go to sign it.
Okay.
With that added waiver.
Okay, so I can have the engineer just get that added pa- page, make sure it's updated and corrected.
Yep, with what's, you know, what the waiver has requested, so we could conditionally approve the
I appreciate that.
Modification to the.
Move forward, right?
Hmm.
Yeah, right. Okay, so.
Michelle?
Yes.
Before you do just public, I don't.
All right. Is anyone here have any questions, comments, concerns, come on up?
I'm here because I got a letter.
Okay. Come on up to the microphone. These little flat things.
Uh, I'm here because I got a letter talking about the altering Golfer's Way. Golfer's Way is the entrance into the golf course from Clear Pond Road?
Yes, it is.
So, so it was a previ- it did come before planning board.
So what you're telling me is you wanna do something with the Golfer's Way, no big deal to me.
Correct.
Okay, but, uh, I never, I, I used to drive by, and I still drive by, um, apparently the entrance at Route eighteen, is that your place?
No.
Or just?
I'm off of Clear Pond Road.
All right.
Right across from the Clear Pond.
They're doing something over there, I mean, if you, if I walk in, I could probably wind up walking into the golf course, right now I have a bus to golf course.
Dave Morris.
That's a totally different?
Totally, totally different.
It is.
All right, well, uh, so apparently, the reason why we got the letter, myself and probably neighbors of ours, is, uh, that if we abut the golf course and anything that you do.
Yeah.
notify us.
Correct.
Right.
Yes.
That's all I wanted to know.
Okay.
Get to go back next day.
Yeah, so it was a minor modification to a previously approved subdivision plan, so. Did anyone else have a question, come, come up, please?
Can we get someone else?
Can we get through one?
Yeah. You, you don't need any, right?
Nope, that's all enough.
If you could state your.
I just wanna know, um, the speed bumps that are on Golfer's Way, are they gonna stay there or are they gonna be removed?
I don't believe there's any speed bumps remaining on the.
They will be removed.
Plans.
They will?
Yeah, there are. I mean, forgive me, because we reviewed this. Long time ago, but.
Remove them.
So this road will be up, Madam Chairman, this will be up to the town standard, this road, so it won't be basically private anymore, it'll be whatever the town requires.
So the speed bumps will be removed?
Yes.
How much wider is the, the road gonna get?
Uh, this is my last one. The road actually, I believe it's gonna be narrower, it's pretty wide now, it's gonna be narrow with a sidewalk on one side.
So there'll be no taking of any property?
Oh, okay. No, it's not, no, your house is actually right there.
Yep, about thirty-six, and this is forty-four.
Yeah, last one.
Oh, thanks. So the speed bumps go away, they'll.
Okay.
Give me some restful, restful afternoon.
I know which way you're going with that, I know one of them was.
I'm a school bus driver, and I take a nap in the afternoon. And I used to try to.
If you have anything in the back of your truck and you hit them, it's he has it.
Yeah, I'm sure. Especially the guys that are supposed to be at work, but they have their work trucks with them, they're telling their wives they're at work, you know? I've done that.
The noise, the noise I, the noise I get where I live is, is the guys that get out of their car and, and curse the speed bump and are looking to see if their car is still, still in peace.
You can tell who the bad golfers are already.
And, and for the folks in the audience too, if you want copies of these plans, they are up on our website, um, or you can inquire at the.
Well, it's in the agenda packet.
In the agenda packet, on the website.
Yeah, for this evening's meeting.
Yeah.
So speed bumps are going?
No problem.
Property's gonna be taken? The street's actually, you think, narrower?
They're gonna add a sidewalk, yeah, so it's gonna narrow the actual roadway.
Wow.
Life is good.
That's all I got.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions, come on up?
Uh, Ramizidis, Harcourt Ave, I just wanna, what are they doing with this, uh, proposed easement of the drainage? Is it, is it drainage that comes off of Harcourt Ave?
No, if, if I may, members of the. Yep. So the, the drainage is to pick up the, the drainage from the, from the parking lot, which used to go right in here.
Is it, you know, where that, there's a, there's a buildup of cinder blocks, there's a tree that's actually.
Oh, that's, that's right here.
Oh, that's over here?
Yeah, that's right up there.
Okay, so these, oh, all right.
And that drainage goes here, then it does go here, then it's gonna end up over there.
So this is kinda down where those boats are stored?
Boats are right, right there, yeah. This is actually the parking lot.
Oh, oh, I see. So nothing up here?
Nothing up there. And the only reason we needed to move was cause of the utility pole for the solar pretty phase was smacking middle of the road.
Yeah, so we can affect it, that drainage thing. Comes up on Harcourt.
Yeah.
Satisfied, okay, did you have a question? Come, come on up? Just state your name, please, for the record.
My name is Kim Curtis, I live at Blue Two Clear Pond Road. I just wanted to know, the cul-de-sac, um, is, is it gonna lead to Harcourt or Reservoir? It's only gonna go, can you imagine, so people aren't gonna be able to come down to Clear Pond and get to another?
It's gonna go right around that cul-de-sac tree that's in the middle of the island?
Yeah.
That's right where it's gonna go.
Okay.
And then it ends right there, then it goes over the parking lot.
And so is Reservoir Street still gonna be gated off?
Yep, nothing to do with that, that's staying gated off.
And nobody's going, the, the Harcourt entrance is not gonna be opened up?
No.
It's my property, and that's all that too.
She's on the left side coming in. Again, no, just, it's just so I can.
And I know you probably can't see it, but it's the cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, so at this point, would you like to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, revised site plans for forty-four Clear Pond Road with.
Oh, subdivision.
Subdivision, sorry. Subdivision.
Second.
Well, with the, yeah, with conditions.
Yeah, but.
Stated that, produce the updated.
Cover sheet, including the.
Revised waiver.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion, is that good Kathy? All right, motion in, Jack seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Oh, yes, and let's close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing for forty-four Clear Pond Road.
Motion.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is closed, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Moving on, public hearing for site plan review, nineteen Main Street, continued to this evening upon the application for site plan review submitted by C.D. Dankwitz Realty Inc. For the construction of a proposed mixed-use retail and business development comprised of two buildings and associated site improvements. Yeah, that's always the big draw. Good evening.
Good evening.
And if, if it makes sense for you to, because there's less people, if you wanna
You move the board up closer this way.
Yeah, pull, pull it back.
Delete it this way here.
How's that?
All right, and Liz, you're also here for this item?
Yes, I am.
If you'd like to come up, so you've gone through some, uh, peer review, we've had multiple, uh, revisions and reviews.
Yep, yep, we did, um, we did, uh, we got the first set of plans and we did a review on that and we issued a letter, I believe in this spring, I wanna say May, then we got a second set of plans and we issued a letter. And I learned out yesterday that there was a third set of plans that was submitted and we were not under contract to review a third time, so we did not do a review of that set.
Oh, okay.
So I can comment on the second letter?
Okay.
Some of the big items that were remaining and.
And we can talk about how, if they were addressed?
Let me introduce myself, I'm Lawrence Silva, from Silva Engineering.
Nice to meet you.
Hi, I've never met her.
So, so that's why, all right, so this one's dated July twenty-eighth from Silva Engineering, so this is basically in response to your.
Yeah.
Review. Okay. So do you still have some remaining?
Yeah, maybe if we can, I mean, some of the comments weren't, um, such hot ticket items, I'd say, it's a big deal, um. My, my biggest concern from the last rev- review I did was, um, the sep- the groundwater separation between the subsurface system and, um, yes, the bottom of the subsurface system and the groundwater elevation beneath it. Applicant did some, uh, groundwater mounting calculations and I didn't agree with some of the variables that were used in it. Based upon when I ran the calc using typical USGS, recommended variables, I got a much different value than what the applicant reported.
And just, what, um, what number are you on?
Um, let's see. I have my glasses, so I'll come to one more. So. Um, one of them, it is number six, E. And then that refers to additional comments on the last page in the second one of those additional comments, A and B. So page four of eleven has six E on it, it's the very last comment. And then on the last page, under additional comments, uh, comment number two.
On the last page, under additional comments.
Which letter are we referring to?
Um, I am referring to July third.
You're referring to your letter?
Yes.
Not our response?
Yes, I have not received your response.
You never received a response?
That's, excuse me, that's not true, I think Kathy, did you send it to me?
I did.
Yesterday.
We, we submitted that response back in, uh, July twenty-eighth.
And we also were not under contract to do three.
No one asked anything? Nobody asked anything about?
Your, your questions, comments have to go to the chair.
You're going to her comments, you didn't even ask me to talk about where we went from the beginning of this project to where we are now?
Sir, I, I, I don't like the tone, you have to watch yourself. We're dealing with our peer review right now, she's going over her concerns with us, and we'll go, we'll go from there. Thank you. All right, so, I'm sorry. You said, so I have the number six, E.
Yeah.
And then, what did you say the la- on the last page?
On the last page, um, number two A and two B. Basically, um, we didn't agree with the specific.
Okay, so, so it is different than what I'm looking at, cause I don't see the two.
What, what is the date on your letter?
This is the July twenty-eighth. The response letter.
Okay. Okay.
So what was the number that it was referenced? When you say two B?
Two A and, and two B under additional comments.
Additional comments. You just have under additional is just a response to comment twenty-four.
Um, I can share my letter with the board.
Yeah, if you don't mind, unfortunately, we don't have that one.
So this was. So this was, my notes on the side.
So two, two, so, I, maybe I'll just read it out for the board. So it's A and B?
Yes.
Okay. So two, we have the following comments regarding the values utilized in mounting analysis supplemental of the drainage report. A, the applicant used a specific yield value of point twenty-six to perform the analysis. The USGS recommends using a specific yield value between point fifteen and point twenty unless the applicant has site-specific lab data to support otherwise. The soils within the footprint of the proposed subsurface system are classified as medium sand and sandy loam. Therefore, using the maximum specific yield value of point twenty is appropriate for the site. The applicant should revise the submission to address the comment and resubmit it for review. Uh, B, the applicant has used a value of twenty feet for the initial saturated thickness, which is based on a mass D.O.T. well completion report for a neighboring property. The initial saturated thickness can change drastically over a small area. The applicant must use a soil log onsite with an E.S.H.G.W. to determine the initial saturated thickness. The onsite soil log submitted showed that the deepest test pit was dug to elevation eighty-five point eight feet and the test pit with the highest E.S.H.G.W. was at elevation ninety-seven point three. Therefore, the initial saturated thickness used in these calculations should be eleven point five. The applicant should revise the submissions to address the comment and resubmit it for review. Okay, so... Do you have a response to additional comment two A and B?
I guess I'm, uh, looking at what was, uh, Apex Comment Two.
So, I believe, on your response, that was number twenty-five, right? Am I reading that one right?
Is it?
Yeah.
Twenty-five? I don't have a, I have additional comments twenty-four.
Right here.
Am I missing the B?
I was looking at, additional comments.
Uh, who is that?
Yeah, it's the last, it's the last response.
H nine, okay.
Yeah, I think his, their responses were groundwater mounting calculations have been revised using a specific yield of-
Of the point two oh.
And then, the groundwater mounting calculations have been revised using an initial saturated thickness of eleven point five feet as requested.
That's correct.
Done notes.
Okay.
I mean, it's at six, right?
Are you referring to him as, uh, Comment Two, not twenty-five?
So, um, how, let me crack that back.
Yeah, I think, 'cause, I think that, you might have missed the five wrong there. But, because it was paid for twenty-three.
It's on the signature page.
So the very last comments of my-
Mm-hmm.
July third letter?
Right. But you called it two A and two B.
One and two A and B.
We respond to Apex Comment Twenty-five, which would have been your last comment.
Yes.
So we responded, they changed it, I guess.
Well, they have it sequential, so we just added the sequential.
Okay.
Um- There was one other-
There was, the stormwater, uh, the pollution plan, we asked that to be a conditional, um-
The SWIP?
Yeah, the SWIP, to make that a condition of, uh, approval, that we do that prior to the start of construction. Because there's a lot of variables that we don't know who's doing the work and so forth to be able to make it, we provided a draft.
And, yeah, it is one of our standard conditions anyways. Yeah, as well as the dis, the illicit discharge.
There was a, uh, comment that was about, um, accidental, uh, adding a guardrail. And so, um, we, uh, had addressed that item before, that item had been closed. So in here, everything that was, um, uh, anything that was still open from the second review, uh, is shown in this letter here with an, uh, how we addressed each one of those. And there weren't many, there were just a few.
Okay, so I just wanna go back really quick to the, uh, six, was it six E? Because that's the one that you said-
Six E, um, if, if those, um, if those groundwater moun, mounding, mounding calculations were revised as I requested in that comment on the last page, then six E is not an issue.
Okay, so it does say that they were revised?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we made some adjustments in order to address that. We moved some of the drainage, uh, from the front to behind that first building in order to have less flow in there, less mounding in that area. Um, so we made the adjustments in order to address the comments that you had raised there about that separation.
Um, there was one other kind of big issue that I had from this second letter.
Okay.
Um, six B, so that's on the page before. Says-
Six D?
B.
Both B.
B as in boy.
Okay.
Um, so the way, when I last reviewed the, the design, they have the subsurface system and the, the drainage pipes lead, leading into the subsurface system, I mean, are coming from multiple locations. One of which was a trench drain at the, um, exit, at the driveway. During the Hundred Year Storm, the system is designed to flow out, water will rise up in the subsurface system, go above the stone elevation, and then, and then the elevation goes up according to the response out the trench drain. Now, I guess my concern about that is during higher storm events, if that water's going out the trench drain, that means all of the runoff that would be, would have been captured in the trench drain is bypassing it.
Okay, so going out to the road, basically?
Yeah.
And captured by the road drain that's there, the mass, mass, uh, D.O.T. drain that's there. You were talking about extreme events where the water is going everywhere at that point. So it's basically, uh, a soft failure, in other words, so it's allowing for that water to still be controlled. It's not being controlled onsite at that point because it's beyond the capacity of the site to be able to handle that conditional flow.
It is important to note that Lakeville has had many issues with flooding all over town, and, very frequently. So it, I think we've even, I think I heard a member from conservation saying that we've had a recent Hundred Year Storm, so-
Yeah, and another thing-
Is there something that you suggest to, uh, correct it?
Possi, I, I don't know how the changes that were done to the, the subsurface system based upon the mounting calculations might affect it, but maybe some type of outlet control structure, 'cause I, modifying that a little bit where you're discharging floor as the water fills up in the subsurface system? Um, like a dedicated structure just to, to discharge it, not to allow, not to have water just flow out the inlet pipe. Um, that could be an option.
Can I, can I, you did make a response?
We did.
So, can I, can I read that?
Sure.
So hi, his response with the details illustrating the elevations in the subsurface system have been revised, he ten. The peak elevation within each subsurface system does not, does not exceed the top of the chamber.
That's correct.
Oh, okay.
That's now, 'cause we, we diverted a lot of the water to, to behind the building system, involves that in order to make sure that we could address that comment.
That, does that make sense?
Okay. Were there any other concerns?
Just double checking.
Can I ask, can I ask one question? You, sir, um, on, on some of these, you say that additional comments below and sections below, are those just, you're just talking about referring to like, they're answered later on in the-
Yeah, in other words, if it was, uh, it was actually answered in another comment, that's-
I didn't know if we were looking for something else, that's all.
No, 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 no.
So I was like, is there not?
No, no, we were, we were trying to be, uh, try to address every comment and we felt like we did.
Yep.
And, uh- Sites, sites like these are always difficult because they, uh, they don't have the benefit of having a nice wetland to discharge soon. Early in my career, I, you know, I used to cringe when you had a site that had a wetland on it and I learned over the years that those were the best sites for design.
Okay.
Yeah, speaking of-
The other I still have.
Yeah. Did you have any other?
Um, those were the, just the two big items that were remaining from my second letter that I felt like could be deal breakers. But, if the system's been revised-
Yeah. There, there were, and there were, um, a number of, uh, suggested, uh, conditions of approval that I was, uh, was gonna present to you this evening. Which was number one is that we had presented to you architecturally what the buildings would look like style-wise, but that, um, on the conditions of approval that we would provide the architectural plans, uh, to the planning board just for them to, for you to confirm that it was done in the, in the way that we had presented it to you. The photometric plans would be provided to the planning board at that same time. The approval of the septic design is with the Board of Health right now. We thought it might have been already done, but he was still, uh, completing his final review. And the fourth one we said was the final, uh, the SWIP would, would be provided prior to construction. And then obviously mass dot, uh, permits will be secured prior to construction, that, we can't go to them until such time as we have. Your blessing to go forward.
That's standard.
Okay, so I have those as well as, so, did you indicate a snow storage location on your plans?
Yeah, we had snow storage shown on the plan. They said there was severe-
Are you able to just indicate it, 'cause I did look. Now that you have guardrails in certain areas, I just wanna make sure that the snow storage area was designated.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there, there are a number of areas that were shown for that, but, um-
I do think I saw them.
You did, okay.
Wasn't common, yes.
I mean, maybe I missed it, but I didn't, oh, wait.
So we have like in different areas, like this is snow storage and there are different areas of the site in which we've identified, uh, where-
Oh, yes, the corner. So there's, there's no guardrails there or?
No, the only one where the guardrail was, uh, was added was, is it on this front side? Is that what we were talking about in the-
Yeah, I think, I think that was the area.
Yeah, that wasn't, that wasn't just this, that's not where the snow storage was shown.
Oh, thank you. Okay, I see that now. Alright.
No, it's, it's all in the top, in the top, that will go over to-
Okay.
Yeah, it's up in this section up here.
Oh, yeah.
Here's a few spots.
Yeah.
Alright.
They blend in.
And then, so you only have the, you have two dumpsters, but it's only a one side of the building, is that correct? It's only on one side of the parking lot?
We, we had dumpster enclosure on this side over here.
Okay. Um, planting plan? I know you state proposed landscaping mixture of small shrubs, grasses, and flowers. We do like to see what those are and we ha, our open space committee has a list of recommended plantings that are in line with, um, you know, not invasives, uh, native to this area, et cetera. Are you able to share that with them?
I-
Yeah, we showed, uh-
I see, I'm behind you.
So in other words, I would say that could be one that could be added.
Okay.
Separately to it, that would be the landscape plan, uh, would be subject to review at that time too. So I'm trying to get to the point where I can actually get into mass D.O.T. and stop to get, uh, yeah. Uh, 'cause that process seems to be taking longer and longer than you say, you know, you can see them have a lot. But, uh, we're finding that it's very slow. I got a couple of big projects in Bridgewater on eighteen, I got a true value that's trying to get in there, we're being held up with, uh, mass dot.
Now, what about signage?
Signage, we're showing, uh, project sign here.
Okay.
And that's assigned for, for both tenant spaces there.
Okay, so we do like to see what the signage is gonna be, make sure it's conforming to our sign by law, we could condition it.
Yeah.
Condition anyways.
As well.
So, so-
Um, so, I mean, I don't, I don't know if I feel comfortable closing it with, with conditioning these, these items, unless the board is, 'cause we, we haven't seen the plantings, the building elevations. I know we saw something originally, but we wanna have that filed with it. We wanna have the lighting plan, make sure there's no light trespass, 'cause even this is, you know, a business zone, mixed-use zone, there's still residential across the street. We wanna make sure because there's been issues on Main Street existing, uh, like, from other businesses in the area. So we do wanna see that lighting plan.
Architectural, the elevation.
Right, yep.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so the building elevations, the lighting, the planting, those are the bigger ones. We can condition for the SWIP, the signage.
That's, that's easy.
Um, the mass dot filing. Um-
Better to continue, wouldn't it?
I don't think we showed an actual sign detail.
Yeah, I didn't see one except for the, you know, the-
Because the sign detail would have, probably, like, all the, uh, different businesses.
Would be a multi-tenant.
Four businesses that would be there.
I'm sorry?
Would the sign detail have like the four businesses that occupy the front end of the space?
Yeah, uh, but I see, I see your point in terms of, uh, you seeing the detail of it, because we do have, we have this activity going on back here, how, how we would sign that. Yeah, so what I'll do is we'll provide you, um, that sign detail.
Okay.
Okay, um, was there a, um, was it prohibited where we had two buildings to have two separate signs or not?
It's supposed to be one, um-
Per the site, yeah.
Yeah, one joint, I'm drawing a blank on the name, it's a common directory sign, one common directory sign, but then you can have the sign-
Individual signs in the building.
On the building.
What direction it'll point in.
Well, the reason why I say that is because we have the four tenant spaces here, but we have multiple base in the back, you know, so I don't know if that, um, so what we could have is maybe the general name for this here and then maybe have a separate, uh, tenant sign, say like in a mile and here, so that once you got to this area here, you would, you'd be able to, uh, find which one applies based on that.
And those will all be like private businesses, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Alright, so we'll get to that, we'll get to the detail.
Well, I think, I mean, if you put it on the building, I don't know. I don't know if it-
You said you weren't gonna sign in the back, I'm sorry.
I, you know what, I, I, it was more as a rental for, for general contractors.
Okay.
Do you know more of like storage opposed to a business?
So they're just gonna be like, one, two, three, four, like-
Exactly.
They may put any more fun if they want, but it to be on the building.
They want, but I, I'm not gonna advertise it, I, I just figured whoever, the first-
But we still need to be able to identify them by address and have them in that back area there.
Yeah.
So we'd be calling the back building an actual location on the front side.
Okay, yeah, that's fine, but then to do one out back, I think just number it and-
Okay. Yeah, we'll get you the detail on that, so-
You can have it on the building, just to have a separate general sign if not, it's-
Right.
Yeah, I think that's, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and yeah, so the lighting plan, just make sure that it shows the light trespass, you know, doesn't go past the-
Yeah. Yeah, that was, the architect was supposed to be doing that, so by getting his elevations, then we'll be getting the photometric from him at the same time.
Okay. Um, so, as you've seen earlier, we don't like to close them unless, you know, because then it prevents you from speaking if we still have questions that remain. So I'd like to keep it open, you can get those to us, we'll draw up a set of conditions.
Do it all the next meeting.
And we'll get it all done at the next meeting, as long, you know, get those items so we can review it and then hopefully we can tie it up and close it.
Mm-hmm.
That works for everybody else, right? No, no questions in the audience?
The only ones here?
The only ones.
Jonah, did you have any?
I'm following.
You're so quiet, I don't mean to like overlook you.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, speak up, so, um-
So, you do a continuation?
September eleventh?
So yeah, September eleventh is our next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, so we- Yeah, so like I said, if there's, so as long as you can submit it, we can work on conditions. When we have a draft of the conditions, we can send it to you.
The architectural elevations prior to that and so forth, so I can have this with it. Okay. Alright, so we'll go for the, uh, for the eleventh?
What's that?
Did we already see the ones?
Do I have some?
I know.
I think we saw some, uh, images from the first meeting, but it was a while ago.
What we have here is we had, um, pictures, similar, similar to this type of architecture is what we said.
Right, but we need something to file.
But we, what you want it to be is now specific to-
What's the real thing, yes.
Exactly. Yep, so we wanna see that, we wanna see the lighting plan.
Yeah, we had just that, that's okay.
The signage detail and then the rest of the competition.
I just wanted to make sure that it was going to be able to get approved, we expect the funds to take care of it and do all the other stuff.
We were trying to hold off on-
No, again, yeah, of course.
No, um, civil engineers are cheap, but the architects- No, civil engineers are cheap, but the architect.
I never, I never made any money.
All right, so, so September 11th, it does, like if it doesn't.
If it doesn't work, I'll be jumped to, we'll make it the follow.
We'll, we'll put you on for that one and you have the option to continue, but again.
But hopefully if you don't have any, like, so when we'll draft the conditions, we can send it over to you, you can review, and then if you have any concerns and you want to continue, if not, then we can just close it out and issue the set of conditions at that point. Okay, all right, so.
And the, when you talked about on the landscape plan, the.
Oh yeah, so the trees, do you have, so I know open space committee has a list of planting.
Like all native species.
They keeping it a secret? Will you share that secretly?
I'm going to try to find that secret.
All right.
So that way, yep, so the planting, the lighting, the building elevations, condition for the SWIP, want to see the sign, condition for the mast dot filings and permit.
Stand, that's stand, those two are stand.
Right, and so, and, and we do want to make sure that you're going to upkeep the plants if they die and take care of them and all that sort of thing, so we'll have like a standard condition about that.
Absolutely.
All right, so.
I'll make a motion to continue 19 Main Street to September 11th, 2025.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye. What time is that too, time specific?
Um, it would be likely seven o'clock unless, I feel like six thirty, we might as well just like change it to, I, I know sometimes you have trouble, but it's.
It's fine, yeah, six thirty, sorry.
It seems like six thirty.
We do public hearings at seven o'clock, but we do some of our other stuff before.
Yeah, but if we tell them six thirty, then we can start it at six thirty and hopefully get it done sooner too.
Push it at the top of the.
Yeah, they tell me all the time. Hey, last time I was good though, I went right to the top of the class.
Yeah.
So we'll six, say six thirty?
Six thirty, yeah.
And then, we weren't specific with the other two, but.
So, so we're saying what time?
Six thirty.
Six thirty, okay.
Okay.
We don't, yeah.
Very good. All right, we'll see you then.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Fisella, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, agenda item number four, public hearing, definitive subdivision, 92 Holland Road, continue to this evening upon the application of L and B Realty Trust for approval of a definitive subdivision plan submitted by Zing and Consulting Engineers for a two lot subdivision, assessors map 12 block 2, lot 26, possible vote. We do have a request from the applicant for continuation to September 11th, would someone like to make that motion?
Make a motion to continue 92 Holland Road to September 11th, 2025.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Six thirty.
Six thirty.
Six, yes, six thirty.
I didn't say a time, I just left it open. Whatever time you want.
Okay. All right, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Agenda item number six, discuss placeholders for Fall Town Meeting, possible vote. So right now we have placeholders for Fall Town Meeting, potentially stormwater bylaw, hopefully. Um, OSRD, if Serpik can help us get that tied up, and accessory apartment getting, removing that in its entirety.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So at this point, would someone like to make a motion to send a memo to the select board requesting placeholders for those three items, is there anything, unless is, am I missing something? Are those the three, right, that's it?
Yeah, that's it.
I feel like I'm missing something, but, okay. All right, we got a motion.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Kathy, can we get that memo? Awesome, all right. Uh, agenda item number seven, review the following zoning board of appeals petitions. We have A, Erickson Group, 20 Wisteria Street, I didn't see anything in the packet, was it, did I miss something for the Wisteria? I, it was like the, yeah, mine was Clark Road, was the first one, maybe.
Murphy, yes, the first one. Requesting a special permit for the minimum lot size proposed project, remove existing single family home and construct new single family home 28 by 30 feet, see attached narrative.
That was a demo.
Yeah, but, so there's a bunch of these, so it's basically raise and rebuild. Typically, we don't make comments on the residential that, unless there's something specific to it, um, is there any, any questions, comments, concerns from the board on this one? Anything that you want to note, Kathy?
Uh, no, not on this one.
Okay. Uh, then, so we'll, we'll just do it all in one, okay? Uh, cause there's a bunch, there's a bunch of these. So the next one is 7 Holland?
That one was, no, that one was withdrawn.
Oh, uh, all right, 7 Holland Street was withdrawn. All right, the next one, I do have the 42 Clark. This one is an Article 6, non-conforming uses. Intent is to raise the existing structure, install a new foundation, constructing a new 911 square foot house with a small front porch that meet all current building codes, this will increase the current footprint by 474 square foot, we will be maintaining the front non-conforming setback but increasing the length. Once again, I mean, this is Clark shores, I mean, they probably, I'm sure they're going to have to go through Board of Health for this and.
Clark is something with the well here, I can see on the plan.
Well, that's why these things, these, a lot of these Clark shores houses, they don't, they need to be looked at, well, septic, all that, so. So I don't know if this board's interested in sending any comments, once again, it's residential, we typically don't, unless there's something specific.
Yeah, Clark shores.
Cause just so, so we don't usually comment on the residential that go to ZBA unless it has something that pertains to planning board purview that we've seen or looked at or something we've, you know, had experience with. Uh, we do typically send comments for commercial developments, because we look at those more so.
Thank you.
So 42 Clark, no?
Nope.
Okay. The next one.
I like seeing, I like seeing some of the older stuff that deserves to be torn down, torn down and replaced.
Yeah. All right, the next one is D, Sonia Properties, 74 Lakeside Ave, this is another, I believe it's raised and rebuilt?
Elevate the existing dwelling.
I know, yeah, I saw elevate, but I think they meant raised.
Yeah.
Construct an addition.
No, that's the one that was right on the water with the sunroom, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Oh wait, so.
Sonia Properties. Hold on.
Multiple properties?
Two lots.
Oh, is this the one that has something across the street as well?
Yeah.
Castle 1, castle 2.
Lakeside, right?
That's 42 Lake City.
Yeah, 42 Lake City.
Elevate the existing dwelling, reconstruct the sunroom and construct an addition.
Yeah.
So they're changing their setback by like, they're reducing it by like one foot, 1.9 feet.
So, so elevate, like they're literally lifting it, this is not a raise, I thought it was like a, I thought it was another raise and it was like typo or something, okay.
No, I looked the house up on GIS.
It's weird, because their drawings like show the new addition, but don't show the, oh, you can see the, this thing's very light.
And this would go to conservation too.
If there's any wetlands. So, I don't know if it's.
It's on the.
Go within that one.
Right on the waters.
Danger species. Do you know if it's going to, I'm sorry, do you know if it's going to Concom?
I don't know.
Yeah, so what they're doing is they're, they're raising it, elevation 61.3.
Yeah.
They're tearing the sunroom down, redoing that, and the found, and they're putting a new foundation that's going to meet human requirements.
Cause they want peers, right?
Yeah.
Sunroom, yeah. Okay.
And they're putting addition in, away from the water.
Yeah, which.
And they're putting a new septic in too.
Yeah, which would make sense given, you know, everything, so, okay.
Any comments?
Nope.
Good luck.
So the next one is the 135.
Staple shores?
Yeah.
And that is this one. Okay.
New deck on Sonnet use.
Yeah, I didn't have anything on this one.
Oh yeah, and they have a reduced lot coverage percentage, which I thought was good.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I didn't have anything on this one.
Yeah, okay. The next one is Justine's Way, this is the only one that I thought of because we know that there were concerns from abutting subdivision regarding drainage of water on two other properties and.
Yes. Near and near the food.
I mean, the applicant is proposing the construction of a 2,400 square foot accessory barn with a 600 square foot overhang, please see the accompanying plan for section 6.3, special permit from the zoning board of appeals, a special permit is needed for accessory structures larger than allowed by the section. So I feel as though this is probably a location that this bylaw really should be applied to because of the location. This is large, and like I said, we, there's already existing drainage issues, so maybe this is one that we want to send a comment back, that we're aware of drainage issues onto neighboring properties. From, but I don't know if it's specific to this, I can't say it's specific to this number of Justine's Way, but I just know that there are water issues in this area.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember where it was, because what, didn't we address something like six months ago?
I think we were going to send a letter to, or we had voted to send a letter to all of the residents on Justine's Way, I think it was to all of them.
Right.
But I don't know if that ever happened. So.
So this, they have a, so my question is, are they building a, so they're building a, they're building a 2,400 square foot barn, but they already have an existing.
Right.
They already have an existing larger barn.
Yeah.
I don't know where, so again, I'm not, I, I, I agree with you, like this is the way, but to tear it up behind that 3,000 square feet, I don't, I don't, I don't know exactly.
In the heaven of the money?
Not, not by, not with.
I was going to say, because they, they meet the criteria, 2,400 square feet is the three acres, I believe, or was it five acres?
Uh, I thought it was five, but wait.
It's four and a half.
Twenty four is the highest we can do.
Yeah.
I think it was 1,500 for three acres.
So it's, it's 2,400 for five acres.
Yeah.
I don't, I, I had a call.
I put a shit in, yeah. If you give, have a second.
The good thing is, even if we don't send a comment back though, the good thing is, like at this point, they have to notice the abutters, so like people with concerns, hopefully they will show up anyways, so they'll be more vocal with their concerns, ZBA will listen, probably more so to them than to us, honestly, because.
Well, no, that was the whole per, the whole purpose of it was to allow, if it wasn't, then people could just, they could just do this with a building permit and no one would know until it's already started.
Right, exactly.
So I'm, again, I'm, I don't know exactly what it is, but again, I'm, I'm not as concerned, like you said, if, if you already got like a 3,000 square foot barn or a 2,500 square foot barn, you're building another one, I don't, no one's, no one's complaining about it, I don't know what, I don't know what, yeah, what.
Yeah, but what do you better say what?
It's not like he's really farming.
No, well, it's, it's definitely, it's behind his existing ones, like you look at that, so it's not like, it's, it's not like he's putting it out front or like.
No, it's way in the back.
Clear cutting land to do it.
Did he, did he say anywhere what the usage was going to be?
No.
Would this be up to the abutters to say?
Well, they could, so the ZBA is going to hold a public hearing and allow for residents to comment and chime in on their concerns, so I would hope that they're, you know, taken to heart and, and maybe if there are no concerns and no one shows up, then it is what it is and ZBA will make their determination based off of what they think is appropriate.
Remind me, was there wetlands in this area?
ADU is applied to, John.
Trying to remember.
Excuse me? ADU, is this going to play?
Cause I don't see anything on the plan, so I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know specifically, and I didn't look.
Residential.
And I don't.
The map here.
It is located in Zone X.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
No known wetlands.
Okay.
Or within 100 feet of the proposed work.
Yeah, we're, I'm trying to like find this on the.
So.
Didn't this, didn't this, didn't this probably come for something before?
Just.
I.
Was, was it just that the abutters, I think, so the neighboring, I think it was Fuller Shores that was having, people on Fuller Shores were having drainage, water draining onto their property from.
Right, right, that's right.
Because they, they were not, I don't think they claimed their drain.
That's an interesting barn, you could have another barn, it's already clear, it's already, so we're going to build another one.
Right.
I'm not, I'm not kidding, okay, I got it.
I, yeah, I have no problem on it.
Okay, so we'll leave that one. Uh, the next one is the Fuller, 225 County Street, we're familiar with this one, we've just gone through the ADU process with it, and it looks like they're looking for some relief in regards to the size of the buildings that exceed the 1,500 square feet, so. Um, once again, residential, we've kind of done due diligence, I'd say, with conditioning the ADU and they have to go through the necessary channels in order to move forward with any additional structures besides the ADU.
The only thing they didn't fill out was, was, they didn't fill out the coverage.
Oh, the lot coverage percentage.
Or the existing, and proposed. I know it was filled, it was filled on the previous one, right, the previous ADU.
So we did have to request for them to add it to the ADU lands, right?
To these, yeah.
Yeah.
So, and that's probably something we should add to the site plan application.
Yep. Yep, well, because we talked about doing it for ADU. But also for site plan.
Yeah.
So I'm not going to be a stickler, but like, I'm a little, I'm a little taken back that they didn't, that half the form is not filled out.
Yeah, I know, and.
It's not, they're not, they're not, they didn't strike off what zone it is?
Yeah, the, the problem with this is I was on vacation and I came back to like six ZBAs and I, I had to meet the deadline, so it was what it was.
I guess.
So normally I would say, no, I can't accept this, but it was already there.
It was already stamped in by somebody.
Yeah, so.
Who stamps things in when you're not here, just out of curiosity?
Uh, usually the clerk's office will take them in.
So can, well, it's up to the ZBA, right, to decide if it's, if they can, I mean, I don't really care, but they should, they should check it off.
Well, if they're really missing something like serious, they, they won't make a decision, they'll continue it until it's decided.
That would be my suggestion, make it off the form. I don't know, I don't know who filled it out, if it was Jamie or the attorney.
So what do we think, uh, do we want to send any comments back on any of these?
I think we should probably send a comment back, since this is kind of come for our purview. Just.
What would you think?
About the, the plans and adding the.
Pertinent information?
Yeah, the pertinent information, but I, I don't know, that's up to you folks.
You mean just for the application?
Just, yeah.
The missed information?
Yes, sir.
But I don't know, I mean.
We're just going to, yeah.
Is that overruled?[1704.84]
Is that overreach?
Maybe.
Yeah, so then, you know... Just checking all the...
Well, I mean, I'm just...
I know, I mean, yeah, but...
I appreciate you throwing it out there, but I mean...
But other than that...
ZBA should be looking at that, too.
If they... Yep, so...
Okay, so...
They can watch our meeting.
All right, so no comments for any of these? Does someone want to make that motion?
I mean, this one isn't coming back to us at some point?
No.
No. All right, let's move it along. It's outside the clock.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to send no comments to the ZBA for the properties reviewed.
Okay, we have a motion. Second, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Uh, we have two sets of minutes in our packet. Would someone like to approve those or any... Oh, actually, one edit, sorry. On June 12th. Because it's in the beginning of the meeting. I know Jack, sometimes you join us a little later. We started at 6:00 PM, and then it said, Jack, join the meeting at 7:05. I think it might have been 6:05. So that's the only thing I had. But other than that, if someone wants to make a motion to approve these two sets of minutes...
I'll make a motion to approve the June 12th, 2025, and the... Where's the other one?
June 26.
June 26, 2025, meeting minutes, as stated with the one check.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries, minutes are approved. Um, the next item on the agenda is site plan review inspections. I don't think we have anything in here. We're not going to deal with that one right now. We'll push that out. Administrative update. Deanna, you have 30 seconds for an update on EDC committee that you joined on Monday. Do you have 30 seconds worth of info?
30 seconds worth. It was a very productive meeting. We had Jay Pecos, Executive Director for Economic Development, from Taunton come in. Gave us some really great feedback. I encourage everybody to watch the video if you can. Some great information was shared about retail space, what they've done to improve some of the major areas within Taunton and rehab those areas just in the most past five years. So it was a lot of good information. Very quickly, we're looking to resurvey residents for... And also for small businesses within town as part of the economic development survey. So we're going to look at that. And also discuss revising the Economic Development Guide prospectus piece as well.
Prospectus?
Like a...
Charge?
A showpiece, a, you know, a...
Oh, brochure, okay.
Marketing. Sure. And that's all I have.
Excellent, thank you for that update. Appreciate it. Next meeting is going to be September 11th, 2025, at the Lakeville Police Station. We're going to open that meeting at...
Wait, 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 6:30.
September 4th.
September 4th. Sorry. The next meeting is September 4th via Zoom. Did we give them a time? I don't think we gave them a time. September 4th at 6:30 PM? And we'll let the fire chief know, and we'll do it via Zoom, Lake Cam, hint, hint. And then the following meeting will be 9/11 at 6:30.
Here?
Here, okay.
Make a motion to close the meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Meeting is adjourned.